House, meeting room number two northeast corner, third floor with all three members present. I'd invite you now to please rise and do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just kind of a notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board is given an opportunity to comment on the issue and or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and a roll call vote will follow. First item on our agenda this morning is the approval or the amendment of the agenda that has been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I second that.
Got a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Moving on to the consent agenda, first item is the approval of the minutes from regular session of November 3, 2015. Next item, the file district court report from 10:15, this is general supplemental 10% surcharge for a total of $863.24. And item number four, the approval of the claims as audited and authorized accounting auditor and recorded to issue payment of same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting would be included with all claims paid for the month of November. The November list of claims will be part of the first meeting in December. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the end payment of the consent agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
We got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Moving on, item number five.
We all voted already.
First, item number five, this is approved personnel action. We've got two of those, first being the change of status and change rate of pay for Austin Ewalt Secondary Road Department. Change of status from mechanic two to mechanic three. Change rate of pay from 2409 to 2426. This will be effective on November 17, 2015. And as our engineer enters the room, would you like to comment on the personnel action for Austin Ewalt?
Sure. He's just being...
Need you to go to the mic.
Sorry. Yeah, Austin has just helped us out quite a bit with his mechanic skills and he is a trained and qualified mechanic, so we're just want to bring him up to where we do use his skills as mechanic quite a bit.
Are we at the same staffing we were in our mechanic area as we were with the retirement of String and everybody now?
I think so.
Okay.
I would have to...
Because I know we were one over because we wanted to be at a certain level and then when String retired...
And we have guys that come in and do sort of what String did.
Okay.
But they're not, they might not be the same classification as String.
All right.
Because we have guys that can weld and guys that are excellent fabricators and...
But I think when we brought Austin on, it was to train him when we did have that retirement.
Correct.
And now we're probably back at the level...
Yeah. And I would see him moving into a mechanic's position later.
Okay. I'm just going to make one comment that these amounts on this particular one are as per the change in the union contract.
Yes.
Going from one position to another.
Yes.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion on this personnel action.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve this personnel action, the change of status and change rate of pay for Austin Ewalt Secondary Road Department to change of status from mechanic two to mechanic three. Change rate of pay from 2409 to 2426, effective November 17, 2015.
We got a motion, need a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, the change of rate of pay, Cody Hildebrand, Buildings and Grounds Department, change rate of pay from 1325 to 1475, effective November 17, 2015. And our Buildings and Grounds Director, Lucas Badke, good morning.
Good morning. This is a change of rate of pay. Cody's coming off probation. He's come a very long way in a short amount of time here. He's doing real well, we're happy with him and like to give him a bump up to hopefully keep him on with us.
How is Cody adjusted to working in the jail environment?
Very well, actually. He is kind of a timid guy, not real outgoing, but doesn't seem to bother him at all and he's actually opened up quite a bit.
That was one of our concerns.
Yep, yeah. It was one of mine at the start too, but I don't worry about it at all now.
Because it's a completely different environment to work in.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's very different.
You know, and one of the things, this has kind of fallen in line in a day with, I guess, what we kind of started with five years ago in restructuring that department.
Yes. This change of rate of pay on this one for coming off of the probationary status is a little larger than we've done in the past. However, that being said, it falls into line with the restructuring that we've started on this department that has literally been a five-year genesis. Lucas's department is literally operating with about two and a half people, less than it was five years ago, and is getting the same job done.
I wouldn't say the same, but close.
You know...
We're doing very well with what we have.
We gauge that based upon the feedback we get from department heads and elected officials about the environment they work in. Because, believe me, when they're not happy, the supervisors hear about it. And we're receiving very few comments in the negative and quite frankly, we're receiving more comments in the positive.
That's good. We tried really hard.
So it's literally, this is, we're getting close to the culmination of a five-year renewal of your department and it's, I'd say it's gone pretty well.
And we're getting some good people.
We are.
I think you're getting some good people that you...
Yeah. We've had a couple of very quality new hires.
It's, we think we've stepped it up. It's without a doubt operating with fewer employees and the job is still getting done.
All right. Thank you.
All right, I would entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we approve the rate of pay for Cody Hildebrand, Buildings and Grounds Department, for a change rate of pay from 1325 to 1475, effective November 17, 2015. And I would also like it noted in the minutes that this is coming off of probation.
Mr. Chairman, I would second this motion.
We got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number six, Resolution 2015-0048. This is a resolution of the Marshall County Board of Supervisors adopting the county multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And I'll bring Marty up right away to go into the meat of this one.
The goal of hazard mitigation planning is to look at ways that local governments and the school districts across Marshall County can reduce the impact of different disasters that face the county. This plan looked at 18 different disaster-type events, like severe winter storms, windstorms, tornadoes, thunderstorms, lightning, hail, extreme heat, radiological, hazardous materials, drought, infrastructure failure, transportation incidents, terrorism, grass or wildline fires, flash flood, river flooding, dam and levee failure, earthquake, human disease, and animal, plant, crop disease. So it looked at 18 different types of events. FEMA, which is funding, I guess 75% of the cost of this effort, has a very prescriptive plan that they require us to follow, so that's why it ended up being 471 pages.
Seventy-one pages, yeah.
Right, so it's a lengthy piece of literature to review. This is a plan update from the previous plan that was done about five years ago. And we also held three meetings in the spring and summer of 2015 here to come up with the elements in the plan. There were many different goals from all cities, counties, and public school districts. There are 55 pages worth of goals in the plan. Some of those goals talk about things like tornado safe rooms, water improvements of different kinds, sirens, outdoor warning sirens, sewer improvements to reduce backups into homes or to reduce the threat of floodwaters entering sewer facilities, culverts that may be restricting the flow of floodwaters in certain areas, floodproofing, different types of structures, mainly those would be sewer water type facilities, derelict buildings in different cities and counties, emergency generators for items like lift stations or public water facilities or fire stations, burn bans, public education, fire department equipment, improving roads so emergency equipment can get out there easily, mutual aid agreements between different municipalities or, I guess that's what that would be, improving city buildings, weather radios, so again, people have immediate knowledge of about weather events, boat ramps, recruiting emergency responders, fire station improvements, acquiring and elevating structures, windbreaks, and courthouse security. The plan is necessary to qualify for FEMA grants over the next five years for different types of improvements. So many of these projects I listed off would be eligible for FEMA hazard mitigation grants. This is, I guess, the initial step in the plan review and approval process. I guess from here, if you approve the resolution, the plan will be sent to the states and FEMA for review. They'll likely have a few comments back and then we'll have to amend the plan a little bit, so we'll be back again for another approval in three to six months' time from now.
Is this a continuation of this resolution? I mean, we're just continuing what we had, what, five years ago, aren't we?
Renewing.
Renewing it, I guess.
Yeah, I guess we're basically almost starting from scratch from what was done five years ago, you know, because we got to go back through the same process again. Obviously, the history is there from where it was five years ago.
I guess one of the things you hit on there was the courthouse security.
I don't remember us reviewing that five years ago when we worked on the plan.
Is that something new?
That wasn't in there. Okay. What possible grants are there through FEMA for courthouse security?
Again, that hasn't been a thing that they've been funding across the state. The things they've been traditionally funding have been things like tornado safe rooms, sometimes sewer projects when they're reducing backups into homes and businesses, floodproofing structures, acquiring and elevating structures, sometimes sirens and emergency generators. Those have traditionally been the type of projects that they've funded. And again, the funding from FEMA is based upon natural disasters, so if there's another big event in Iowa like the 2008 floods, there'll be a lot of money in this hazard mitigation fund. Right now, there isn't much money because there hasn't been a disaster here for a while that's big in scale. So, again, but there are a lot of tornado safe rooms in the plan, so many of the public school districts and cities see the benefit of having a safe room.
Will this also be tied to us approving the almost annual change from FEMA on the floodplain maps?
This isn't related to that.
They're not tied together? Okay.
What do you mean by that? Because I know they were changing our floodplain constantly, kind of.
Almost on an annual basis. And the problem with that is if we don't approve it, then the individuals that actually have properties that are in the floodplain cannot qualify for the federal flood insurance.
I see what you're saying.
But if we do approve it, it expands some of those floodplanes into areas where people don't really understand that they've been in them in the past and they don't find out about it until they go to sell or put their residence on the market and all of a sudden they go and there's a search done and they find out that their property is now in the floodplain.
It's almost like a catch-22.
It is. It's like FEMA holds a gun to our head and says, "Look, you either approve this or the people that actually need the help aren't going to be able to get it, but if you do approve it, you put a burden on a tremendous amount of properties that are going to be put into the floodplain without their knowledge." It's a catch-22.
That possibly never...
Never used it.
...experienced a flood.
No.
It gets involved in their financing, too.
Yes.
Because all of a sudden, they're financing, but it doesn't come through. And it's because they have to buy it if it's in a, have to buy the insurance if they're in the zone.
But if we don't do it, we don't, we're not covering something.
Then the people that need it can't get it.
I had a question on the radiation, the nuclear thing. Because we're always talking normally about natural disasters and then we throw this in the mix. That's not a natural disaster. What's our plan there?
I guess I might refer to Kim.
I would, Kim needed to get up here anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Lots of Cipro.
It's not an emergency when Kim Elder comes in.
Yeah. Kim Elder, Emergency Management Coordinator. Radiological, we do that because, several reasons. Transportation, transportation accidents can involve radiological with our train traffic and several highways that go through that if we had a wreck or a derailment, if we had to deal with that radiological, then it's in there. And a lot of these things that Marty was talking about, even though they're not right now funded, like security for the courthouse, if we don't mention it in that plan and a grant becomes available or you need that, let's say with the terrorist activities right now, they may open up some more possibilities of grants. I'm not saying they will, but they might, because I know they did after 9/11. Then you might see something that you might be eligible for, but if it's not mentioned in this plan, then we're not able to go with that. Same thing with a lot of those things.
Like earthquake. I don't remember the last kind.
Exactly. A lot of those things on there aren't things that we're going to see, hopefully, but if they're not mentioned and it does happen, then we're not able to go after that funding. So that's why the cities look really, really in-depth and Marty's group was great about encouraging those cities, "Don't just look at what you have now, but what could happen. What are the possibilities, if there's even a possibility of that happening? Mention it in there." I know like West Marshall School has mentioned air quality. Right now, that's not something that's being funded, but it may be something that can be in the future. And if we don't update this plan in the period that FEMA requires it and mitigation funding becomes available, then we're not eligible. So we are required to update that plan.
Can FEMA take some of those out that we mentioned, like the earthquake?
They usually don't.
They don't? They keep all that?
No. Because there are statistics behind even the earthquake, you know, what are the chances? It wasn't high on the list, but there is that chance that we could see something.
We had one in '69 or '70.
It was, yeah, yeah. It was somewhere back in then, yep.
Wasn't very big.
Wasn't very big. And hopefully, we won't see one. But then, another good example with the mitigation planning, over the past few years, we've had counties that had joined us that maybe had some wind damage, but we weren't declared. A lot of times, if there's a county that touches our borders that is declared, they will push that mitigation funding over into our county and offer our county to also jump onto that mitigation grant and see if we need anything. So that's when we open up for those tornado safe rooms and other mitigation things that we've mentioned. So even though we don't have a disaster right here in our county, it may bleed over into our county because of other counties that had disasters.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we have received FEMA reimbursement through the engineer's office when we've had to do clearings of roads and things. You know, there's a lot of hoops you have to jump through, you have to be specific to that, it has to be past the normal amount of hours, but we get reimbursed for... Paul, don't we get something for equipment and man-hours or was it equipment only?
There's different classifications, but it's debris removal and there's the repair of damages. Some of it's just clearing to get things open and then the other one is to repair damages of infrastructure that was damaged in the event.
But we have gotten some reimbursement before.
Yes, yeah.
Was that bridge up at Liskam, was that?
The one that, on the county line of North 96 is still, it hasn't been funded, it hasn't proved, hasn't shown to be eligible yet and it's taken longer than I expected. I mean, it's been two and a half years.
And we still haven't heard on a FEMA declaration on the bridge between us and Tama County.
That's the one I was talking about.
The one that fell in the creek.
That's what you're talking about, okay.
Were you...
Yeah, you said up by Liskam.
We built a new one west of Liskam.
Right.
There was a culvert west of that bridge that was funded.
Okay.
It wasn't the river bridge there, but there's a culvert that was...
It was high water that it kind of damaged.
Yeah, that was before my time here.
And just for everybody's knowledge, you know, how fast FEMA works, that bridge has been in the bottom of the creek now for three years?
Two and a half.
Two and a half? Still haven't heard anything?
There's a...
I know.
Yet to come, yet to come.
Yeah.
All right, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2015-0048A, Resolution of the Marshall County Board of Supervisors adopting the Marshall County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? I want to just thank Marty and Kim for your explanation of this resolution. Harry, no other? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number seven, Marshall County Audit Proposals for the Annual Audit of Marshall County for the fiscal year July 1, 2015 through June 30 of 2018 that have been received. We have our opening at nine, or the cutoff line is at nine o'clock this morning and...
Everything got in on time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had one that came in and said it wasn't a sealed proposal and we opened it up and basically it got opened and so we just put it back in and I believe it just stated that it was... Basically, from the State Capitol Building from Mary Mosman, just saying that they are not going to commit resources to do it.
Okay. What was the name of that, of what, State Capitol?
State Auditor.
State Auditor.
Mary Mosman.
That was a no.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So this is from Anderson Larkin and Company.
Where are they from?
They are from, good question, Atumwa, Iowa.
Did they give us three different years?
They did.
Okay.
So for year ending June 30, 2016, the fee is $23,500. And that is actually for '17 and '18 as well.
Same price, all three years?
All three years.
Okay.
And that is 325 hours is what they're looking at between the rates of $30 to $90.
How about travel expenses?
I'm not seeing anything, but that doesn't mean that it's not in here somewhere.
So anything over 325 hours that is in addition to the $23,500?
So as above fees will include periodic phone calls and/or visits during the year about specific problems or questions relating to the audit. However, a special study where extensive accounting system works would be billed at regular hourly rates and they do not mark what their hourly rates are.
That's clear as mud.
So this one will have to take just some looking over a little bit further, I think.
Pardon me, who was that?
Hunt, H-U-N-T. And they are out of Askalusa, Iowa. And they really wanted their seal.
Hermetically sealed.
Yeah.
Not a man who's jar, though.
Okay, so for the three-year option, fiscal year 1516, the all-inclusive maximum fee and out-of-pocket expenses will not exceed, the first year is $25,500. The second year is $26,750. And then the next is $28,000.
Not to exceed, again, does that cover hours, travel time?
There have an estimated hours, total hours of 350 on each of those years. And then they have estimated out-of-pocket expenses, 650 on each of those. And then they have a staff hourly rate, the partner, 105, and it kind of goes up every year due to their raises and structure. Manager in charge, the same thing, assistant and clerical items. And it's mentioning that if an A133 is required, an additional fee of the $2,500 will apply each year. So that would be an additional on top of this.
We're going to open them, let the governor make further review of them, but we can table them.
This is the plan I'm looking at. All right, so it looks like $27,800 for the year ending June 30, 2016, $28,200 for the year ending June 30, 2017, and $28,600 for the year ending June 30, 2018.
Do they have any minimum hours and then they charge more after that or did they say?
Maximum hours, I guess.
They're estimate, they have some condition of payments, like their estimated hours. So supervisors, they're thinking about 225 hours, hourly rate of $90 per hour.
So that is on top of the...
This is part of that payment part.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
And without reading it extensively. Kind of finding numbers and kind of going off of that.
You got a lot of fine print to read.
There's a lot of fine print here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And as to what these numbers are consisting of is what they're actually going to be offering in services. That's something that we need to double-check on.
And when you get to, get to the real bottom of it, if they go over their extended, they may actually be higher.
Well, the end result could be higher with.
Yeah. The net could be different.
Travel time.
Yeah, you betcha.
Well, with, Dan's got a bunch of things to look at here and review and read and study. I guess with that, um, I would, I would think we should, um, give her some time to do that. So with that in mind, I move that we table our decision until the county auditor has a chance to review and study the, the, and give us a recommendation.
Do you want to table that till our next, our next meeting, or do you think, which would be?
December first.
December first, or would you like maybe more time, or just once, once it gets tabled, it just stays tabled until it bring, gets brought back off?
We have to bring it back off.
But it needs, it needs to go back on an agenda for her, for their final.
Correct, correct.
Final decision.
Um, we only have three proposals, so I'm thinking that we should be okay for the next.
We can get it knocked out by December first?
Let's, I'd rather get it done and be done.
Okay, because we're coming into budget time.
Yes, we are.
You know, you know how much fun that is.
Actually, I don't.
You're about.
You're going to find out.
Sitch up your seatbelt. It's going to be a bumpy ride.
Well, if you'd want to put in there, tabled until our next board meeting, um, that'd be fine.
And you want, you want your motion to include December one?
That'd be fine. Next board meeting, December one, two thousand fifteen.
I will second that.
I have a motion on a second for, for table until December one, in our next board meeting. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Um, moving on to item number eight, this is the R E M Bell Choir, the R E M Bell Choir, um, from the Career Development Program. Serves adults with disabilities. They would like, and once again this year, to present a bell program on the second floor courthouse rotunda on Friday, December eleventh, twenty fifteen, at ten forty-five AM to play traditional Christmas songs. And this is one of our fun things that we get to do every year on our agenda and talk about and take part in, and, and it's really kind of a.
It's just about our favorite.
It's just kind of one of the favorite things that we have to run across the board.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the request for the R E M Bell Choir to play traditional Christmas songs on Friday, December eleventh, twenty fifteen, at ten forty-five AM, second floor courthouse rotunda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
Got a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion?
This is the highlight of our year, and for those of you out in, that are listening or are here this morning, this is a group of, of individuals that when you see them play these bells, if it doesn't bring a warmth to your heart, it, you have no heart.
It puts you in the holiday spirit, though.
It really does. These, these are individuals with some challenges in their life, and just to see the absolute joy in their faces when they perform, it really does put you in the, it, it brings a lot of things to focus, I would say.
Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, and just a note to, to everybody, the public, and I know James done a great job of getting this out this morning, but the courthouse will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-sixth, and Friday, November twenty-seventh, due to the Thanksgiving holiday. All offices in the Marshall County courthouse will be closed. That is our official public notice. And now we'll go, moving on to the public forum. This is time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken at any of these topics brought up in the public forum. Any public that would like to present a forum? If you do, step to the microphone. Anything? Hearing none. Item number ten is the adjournment. The next regular session is dated, is December one, twenty fifteen, at nine AM. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditor and recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Wednesday, November twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen, at one PM, due to the holiday, Thanksgiving holiday. There be no further business to come before the board. A meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-six.